Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome to our June regular business meeting of the Acre Harbor Township Board of Education. I'm sorry, we were a couple of minutes late. It it takes a little longer to do some things virtually, so you know, all in all, considering, you know, five minutes late is okay. And 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 we're ready to go. So I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to ask Ms. Anaya to please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please.
On Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the current of Acre Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Acre Harbor Township clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertised instructions for this virtual meeting were posted on our website and social media on Friday, June 26.
Thank you, may we have roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Here.
Mr. Ellis? Give him a minute. Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Price? Swiggle around for your microphone. Yeah, I'll give you a minute. Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Summer?
Here.
Mrs. Solagi? Give her a minute to get on. Mrs. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Castellano?
Here.
And I'm going to go back. Mr. Ellis, did he get on yet? And Mr. Price, you got your microphone working?
Yes, I do. Mr. Price is here, thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs.
Okay.
Okay, so Mrs. Solagi and Mr. Ellis may enter later, I'll announce them at that time. Thank you.
Okay. So we are going to say the flag salute together when the flag appears on your screen, please. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you, everyone. First order of business is I need a motion for our minutes, and that would be item 4.1 through 4.3. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis? Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
I abstained from 4.1 and yes to the rest.
Thank you. Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
And I'll just double check, Mr. Ellis? Not yet, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so welcome, everyone, and thanks for joining us. Before we move to the superintendent's report, just a couple of brief comments, as I've been doing since this pandemic has started, and we made it through this school year, I want to begin, and I want to thank Dr. Gruccio, and I want to thank Ms. Anaya for their leadership. I want to thank our entire faculty and our entire staff for all the great work that they have done this year. They allowed our students to learn. We provided meals for our students, and we provided the help and support that was needed. We got through the end of the year. And now we are between our virtual and our regular, as regular as it can be, graduation. So I want to take a minute again to thank first our our project graduation team, Ms. Sonia Cruz, and everyone who was involved, our senior smiles, our virtual graduation, all things that were positive, and I want to thank everyone who pitched in, and everyone has, you know, really come together to try to do the best that we can for the students. I want to thank Ms. Connor and her staff over at the high school. I think they've done a fabulous job under very, very difficult circumstances. I know there's been, we had some discussion last meeting about, you know, our, what our live graduation will be, but, you know, I just want to say that I I support 100% what we're doing over at the high school. I'll be there, I'll be part of it, I'm very fortunate to be part of it, and I know everyone at the high school and in the district has done the best that they could do for our students under difficult circumstances. So it's very much appreciated. And and just a final note I'll say before I turn it over to Dr. Gruccio is that this was a very difficult year, and we worked through it, we got through it together. But guess what, folks? Next year is going to be more difficult. Getting ready to go back to school is going to be the greatest challenge. As you all know, the governor has issued guidance effective last Friday for us to go back. The guidance contains more questions perhaps than answers. So what I'm going to ask is that we all, everyone, all the stakeholders, everyone who's on this call, everyone who's part of the board, administration, faculty, staff, members of the public, students, everyone, we need to work together. So let's please work together and get schools open. It's for for our students. Please. So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn the floor over to Dr. Gruccio for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano, very well stated. I couldn't have done it better. I appreciate your kind words and your recognition, and of course, your support. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the last board meeting of the 2019-2020 school year, June 30th. Here we are. Not where we, I guess, wanted to be in terms of what's going on with COVID, but here we are at the end of June, end of the school year. I too'd like to take some time to reflect on all that we've been going through. We are all truly thankful for the efforts that have been put forth by our teachers, our staff, our administration, our students, parents, our board members, and and stakeholders who have rode these waves with us. It's been an unusual journey. I personally have to say it's been exhausting, emotional, and certainly educational, as I've learned not to make immediate plans, as things, as Mr. Castellano said, change fluidly. I appreciate your flexibility and understanding of the work that we are doing with our staff while being shorthanded. In short, in terms of guidance, receiving guidance sometimes, it's been, it's been great. We have learned that working from home is challenging, and there's not enough time in a day to feel accomplished. However, our priorities are our students and our staff, and I can assure you that our focus and passion lies right there with all of them each and every day. So before I review my district newsletter, I want to give the board an update. A parent survey regarding virtual teaching and learning was sent out to parents, and it was released to glean some feedback regarding our virtual learning. This survey will be open until July 5th, and will serve as important information. The data that we get from this survey will assist us in planning for opening of school in September. And I feel virtual teaching and learning will be a necessary component to that plan. Speaking of, the Road Back, which is New Jersey's restart and recovery plan for education, the strategic roadmap for reopening our schools, has been released, it was released on Friday, and this 104-page document is being reviewed at this time by our administrative staff. We understand that, we we know we have to open school buildings at this time, today, and adhering to the recommendations in this document. And there's four areas. One is to ensure conducive learning environment for our students. Two, supportive educational leaders with their planning. Three, providing policy and guidelines and funding to schools. And four, providing the continuity of learning. This document, I didn't get it through at all, I have to admit, but as I skim skim through it, it refers to anticipated minimum standards, which will be items that school districts should incorporate into their reopening plans as definite components relating to health, safety, and operations. And it also uses the term considerations, which is reference to components that districts and schools should incorporate into their thinking about reopening, but do not represent necessary components of the plan. You see how it's starting to get like flexible and and relevant per district? Okay, so our administrative team will meet tomorrow to discuss and highlight areas that they have concern, as there is some conflicting guidance in there, and we'll get some clarity, and it'll provide us a starting point. From there, our district committee will meet and will begin to create the plan to reopen. I believe in input of stakeholders, and I'm, but through all of this, the ultimate important factor here will be the health, safety, and welfare of our entire school community. So there's many, many areas that we have to cover, we have to research in a month's time. Moving on to athletics, the NJ SIA released Phase 1 for summer workouts, not to be confused with official fall practices. Summer workouts to begin on or after July 13th. On Monday, I spent some time with my fellow county superintendents of high school districts, and we discussed guidelines, and we agreed that these summer workouts will occur two days per week, and will start on July 27th for football, and August 3rd for other fall sports and marching band. Because of the complexity of these guidelines that involve health screenings, monitoring of practice time, the size of a team, equipment, and social distancing, we will join area high schools to take our time with this and be thorough in our preparing our coaching staff, our administration staff, our custodial staff, our nursing staff, so that they feel confident that they are adhering to these guidelines and timelines. So again, health, safety, and welfare of our students and staff is very important. The full, full fall preseason practices may begin on August 10th, as per NJ SIA. We are awaiting their Phase 2 guidelines, which should be coming out soon, but the latest that they released yesterday morning was that Week 0 has been canceled by NJ SIA for football this year, and that affects us, that's our Atlantic City game, and the athletic director already knows that needs to be rescheduled or canceled. Just so you know, that the primary elections that'll be held on July 7th will continue as traditional, our traditional polling sites, as they use our schools, the Davenport, Fergwin, and Alder Avenue schools will be used, and all will be practicing the health and safety regulations for social distancing, masks, and sanitation and cleaning. Last week, it was mentioned in public, and I received many great emails from from board members, and Mr. Delabarka, and he has sent me the contact information for Dr. Christine Ruth, and Mrs. Floyd, that you had mentioned this as well, and Mr. Byrd sent me an email. I just want you to know, the follow-up on that is, we sent the information to our, I sent the information to our professional development committee, and they meet within the week or so, and they will be reaching out to Dr. Ruth to see where we can schedule her for professional development for our staff, whether that will be virtually or in in person. And that will add to our list of presenters in regard to equity in our professional learning experiences, where we've had Dr. Lisa Williams, Jennifer Asawegi, Nate Terrell, Dr. Paula Radmikas, Rust, and these folks have reached out to us and want to return as well to continue their professional development. So I thank you for sending me Dr. Ruth's information, and I just want everyone to be informed that we are pursuing to get her to share her knowledge with us in in our school district. And lastly, our statewide unconference is being sponsored by the NJ DOE called Equity in Action: Strength in Teaching, Leading, and Learning in Unprecedented Times. I am registered for that, and I encourage anyone to go to the NJ DOE site to register for the unconference, which will occur on August 4th. Okay, all right. That leads me to my district newsletter that I share with the community. Every Monday, like, every Monday morning, I communicate with the district staff. I did that through the the school closure, and I got many requests for me to continue to do so, and it's my pleasure to do so every morning as I, every Monday morning as I reach out to our staff. And it's nice to hear back from those who write back, it keeps us all updated, but also communicating with not only the board each work, each week, but also our school community. So I always start off with our current reality. I encourage folks, if they have not seen this yet, it is located on social media sites and also our website, and here I talk about the the graduation plans and the road back to opening schools. You could just scroll up a little bit, and as you know, this this report is centered around our district learning goals of student achievement, climate and culture, and building partnerships. So I do not have control of this, so I, whoever is scrolling for me, you could go to the next section. There we go, student achievement, our report cards are out, we highlight our virtual graduation, and the senior awards and the awards of our eighth grade ceremonies that occurred. Chromebook return, if anyone still has a Chromebook out there that needs to be returned, there is information here, I can please contact Central Registration, and we'll be glad to assist you with where you need to return it, we'll even come pick it up, and if you are in need of a Chromebook for summer work or participation, please communicate with us. Okay, we're advertising for our half-day preschool for four-year-olds and full-day kindergarten. Our Aspire program will happen virtually. Thank you to Ms. Kristen Boyd for all the work that she has done this year in preparing and being flexible and adapting to the virtual world. So she always does a wonderful job, and we appreciate her efforts. Climate and culture, we have worked with climate and culture of our schools, include school perform, school improvement efforts that increase student achievement for all students, and I use the capital A-L-L, through professional development opportunities, the time and resources that we're building an effective learning culture, where students are provided a safe learning environment, and teachers collaborate in professional learning communities to review the student progress. And tonight, we're going to hear a little bit about what that that entails, and you're going to see some some data on student achievement and student progress. But we really work hard for those individualized interventions to occur through our RTI process, where we're assisting all students with learning. And we realize to be successful, that we need to to build relationships with each student and be cognizant of each student's individual learning needs. And this can only be accomplished if we work together to eliminate any predictability of achievement disparities by race, ethnicity, gender, language, disability, and/or economics. Okay, so that is part of our climate and culture mission at this time, and always. High school seniors receive their yearbooks, they're so excited, they are beautiful, they do highlight and grace and gates, educate, and they also are able to get some of the COVID frustrations in there, if you will. So Johnson's did a good job, the yearbook staff did a great job, meeting their deadlines and also capturing all the things that happened during the year. Keep on flowing there. Infinite campuses are parent portal. Hopefully, everybody's accustomed to using that now, if not, there is assistance for you. School messenger reminders that go out. Keep on going. Just so you know, we have been sharing our, the importance of our recognition of social, emotional, and mental health, issues that occur throughout the district with students, families, staff, and we do have resources to assist. While we may not be physically in our schools, we are always constantly sharing resources that we have and partners that we, partnerships we have built. Job openings, Dr. Charlton has those. Job openings always advertised on social media and our website. We are partnering with the Atlantic County Food Bank for resources for students for throughout the summer. Lettuce Program, information has just been sent out, but through the central office. We we thank Mrs. Elko and Cooper Levinson for their assistance with this program, and thank you for including Acre Harbor Township and Acre Harbor Township families, we appreciate that. The Nest is our school store, it's now online and open, I know a lot of the students miss that, but it's great to be able to go on and shop with your, for your EHT gear and show your EHT pride. Virtual board meetings, I think we're getting accustomed to them. Here we are in June, and we will continue in July. Fine and Performing Arts did a great job that they did with their virtual showcases, it's amazing, our students are so talented, and to even be able to share your talent and coordinate everything virtually is is something else. So thank you, and kudos to Dr. Kedetsky and his department. And the message to our student athletes, just talking, and this was prior to my superintendent's meeting, so I will update that for next week. So that is the information that can be found. We also have some highlights here, I appreciate that, holding it for me, of May Harbor Township Track and Field, there's Isabella Leek there, and Gabrielle Germaine, and their achievements and where they'll be going next year. So we're so very, very proud of them. But again, look for this document, it can be found on on our website, and it is my way of communicating all the great things that's going on. What we're going to move to now is a presentation, we have two supervisors with us this evening, we have Mr. Lily Moss, supervisor of ELA, and Mr. Gregory Ryan, who is supervisor of mathematics, and they are going to share updated information on student performance, which I'm very proud of, and I think you're going to be too. So I will turn this over to, I don't see them, but I'm sure they're there, and I believe they have a presentation that has to go up as well. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everyone. Greg and I are, I'm going to share my screen. So unfortunately, this year had some interesting timing as far as the way that we collect our data and track progress monitoring throughout the year. We do three cycles of universal screening at the beginning of trimesters 1, 2, and 3, which is beginning, middle, and end of year consideration for our secondary as well. Luckily, the the third round came at the very beginning of March, and we were able to get most of our population tested and assessed by then in our K-5 population, and we wanted to share some of those, share out with you, because we made so much great progress this year, and we were so proud of all of the hard work that was done within the classroom, within our RTI process, and we felt it was really important to share those accolades with the board. So the first slide that we're just going to talk about is the mission of of being committed to take the collective responsibility for all students. I know in every PD session and every meeting that I hold with teachers, we talk about this, because I believe in this so deeply, and so does Greg and the rest of the supervisors, about the idea that we need to reach all of our students, and we need to invest our time, and we need to invest our resources to ensure that our instruction in the classroom is meeting all students' needs, meeting them where they are, and helping fill in any learning gaps that might happen, both academically and on the social, emotional lens. This is a really important part, and something that we really focus on through our professional development, and when we're considering resources for both the classroom and for interventions. I added in this graphic, because this is something we also share with the teachers within our professional development, and it is the foundation of everything that we do. Our instructional framework is based on a standards-driven curriculum, we use backwards design, we know what we want our kids to do to display that mastery, and then all of the other things that happen are how we get our students to get to that level of mastery of those standards and skills. We know it starts with relationships, we know it's about formative assessment, so that we are able to have that collective responsibility, so we are able to see what students are doing and meet their individual and very different needs. And then through that formative assessment and through those universal screeners, we're able then to use the RTI process to ensure that we are providing interventions both inside the classroom for our Tier 1 and Tier 2 students, and then outside the classroom for Tier 3 when we need it. This work goes into our PLCs, and then, of course, the job embedded professional development. When all of those things work together, we're always able to answer about the desired effect of teaching and learning, and that's how we report out with our evidence-based report cards. So this graphic is just an important grounding piece for all the work that we do, it helps us always focus on that desired effect of teaching and student learning, and how everything works together to help us have students progress and work towards mastery of standards. So the data-driven instruction for 1920. So I believe last week, we revisited the 1819 data. You know, we saw that data as well and knew that we needed to continue on our path to provide that job embedded professional development, and invest in our teachers through that professional development, so that we are being responsive in the classroom to students' needs. So we're working with that formative assessment, we're using teaching and small groups to be able to meet those students' needs, and we both, as part of our plans, the district strategic plans and the goals, were able to target those areas as we look at that whole data that we get from the state and into our own, in order to help track and monitor that progress, which we're going to talk about a little bit today. We're continuing in the literacy world, working on establishing reading and writing workshop. We started a writing workshop this year, continued with reading workshop as we're continuing to grow our materials. We got great guide of reading sets that allow that progress monitoring now with reading records, and we're investing in our read-aloud sets for students, because research always shows that students identify best with stories that they can relate to and connect to, and equity in children's literature just is not very representative of the many diverse cultures that we have within our district. So that is part of a reason why we are investing so much in these read-aloud kits and all these new materials, because the materials chosen for the kits have that in mind, and really do work to ensure that we are representing, representing other ethnicities and cultures and belief systems, so that all of our students can see themselves within books and make those connections. Greg, do you want to talk a little bit about your professional development?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. So on the on the math side, we identified a need to really begin identifying individual student learning gaps, and not only identifying, but monitoring them on a daily basis. So we went out and found professional development that really demonstrated to teachers how to utilize daily formative assessment, how to bridge those gaps right in the moment, and before that, you know, those gaps grow too large. So we brought in professional development in grades 3 through 6, and it was a whole professional development series, similar to ELA, it wasn't just a kind of like a one-day deal. We brought someone in to demonstrate how to teach the lesson using that model, he came back to watch teachers use it, we've been tracking data throughout the year, and as Lily said, it is a shame that we didn't see the the final product of our data, but the professional development itself was very highly regarded by the teachers. Students were growing in, you know, leaps and bounds throughout the year, which we'll show in a minute, and we're very excited to expand it moving into the future. And that's really our main focus on the math end, is really that daily individualize, bridging those gaps and identifying where the where the where the each student needs support. So this year for 1920, as I said, we did implement the math workshop model in grades 3 through 6. We refined our math intervention and strategies in grades 4 through 8, really enhanced that. We hired a part-time RTI interventionalist, and really just overall the systematic RTI criteria, collection, analysis. For, by the first time, we we really took an ongoing look at it, we brought teachers in the process, all different stakeholders, students knew where they stood, teachers knew where each of those, their students were, and it was really just an ongoing conversation throughout the year. There was no more just general direct instruction, it was really when I talked to teachers, you know, where is this student, where is this? you know, where is this student? Where is this student? How much has this student grown? We really were able to drill down much farther than we have in the past.
Just to piggyback on what Greg was saying and what I was saying before, we also continued, as I said, with writing workshop. But we started to really hone in on that small group instruction and how we can use progress monitoring to drive that daily instruction and not waiting for the end of a trimester or waiting for a big summative test to see that a student wasn't understanding. But really focusing on the real-time learning so that we could help students revise their knowledge around information and give them lots of opportunities to work towards mastery. It's not just about taking assessment and not knowing it. It's about continuing to assess, teach, and assess until we got students where we wanted them to be. So we also, last summer, met as a group with our Title One and Remedial Teachers to really hone in on the R T I systems that we were using in both E L A and math. And we were able to come up with criteria. We were able to come up with, you know, if then, like if we're noticing this, then what is the research-based, you know, intervention strategy that we want to use? And we were continually collecting and analyzing and having meetings with the teachers and the classroom teachers about students so that we could help them continue to grow. So here is just a snapshot of where students began in the beginning of the year with their grade level reading for the benchmark assessment, which we did in October and November. And then where they were in March, when we left on March sixteenth, because that's when the data was due for them to update those levels. So we're only talking about four or five months of of that targeted instruction going on. And we saw substantial growth within that amount of time. So, you know, in kindergarten, we saw a majority of our students moving one or two levels, which makes the most sense because in kindergarten, to grow four levels in four months is a lot. We have a lot of students coming in who can't read at all, so most of them left being readers. But then on the flip side of that, as you move up to grade four and five, the levels become more in-depth and the strategies and skills that go along with it become much more. There's a lot more to do within each level, so the the amount of levels that students grow slows down. So in first grade, the first grade band is six different levels. We're in fifth and fourth, it's only three. So that might be a little bit of difference that you're seeing. But as you can see, if you look within that one, two, and three, we see a lot of growth from all of our students across the board. So here's just a visual representation of that growth. So if there was one level, two levels, three, and four, we saw a lot of positive growth and many of our students growing as readers.
So on the math side, we had data for grades one through seven. On the left side of this chart, you'll see the percentage of students that were meeting or exceeding expectations. And obviously, you can see with the green column, at each grade level, we're very excited to see that growth pretty much across the board. And then on the right side, it does not meet where we were hoping those percentages went down, which again, they did in every single grade level across the board. And particularly, what I was maybe most excited to see was the large growth we saw at the middle school level, grade six and seven, because we, a lot of those students come in that were well below grade level. And it was really our first year of a true in-depth targeted R T I process at the middle schools, at least on the math end. So we're really hoping to demonstrate some nice growth, and we did that, and we were successful there. Again, we didn't see the final product of the state assessment, but we're excited to see where that continues in the next year. And this is just a bar graph representation of that. So the blue is where they started. The red is where they wound up. So the orange, any growth is positive growth. So we were, again, we were excited to see every single grade level, the students were growing. They were getting closer to meeting expectations. And again, at the middle school level, we saw significant growth, which was very exciting to see because we've had some tough times making progress there.
So then this slide is our students who were serviced through R T I and their reading level growth. So they are part of that big picture that I shared with you before. But we then, I then took out the students that we serviced. So we're able to see how our R T I services were benefiting students and their growth. So here we saw a substantial amount of growth for all of our students across the board. Again, four and five, you're going to see that levels three and four become are not as as high there because the amount of growth that happens within those higher levels becomes a little bit more time-consuming. And this is really only a four-month snapshot of that. So we saw positive growth here. And we we were using predominantly L L I and then also phonics first for our grades one and two students. And here's just a visual representation of that. And then here's math. We know that there's a lot of research tying literacy to math achievement and that as you increase your reading ability, especially in up to grade three, then math scores also come up. We do offer math R T I at Miller for grades four and five. From cycle one to cycle two this year, we actually had a celebration for our teachers because we moved so many students in math from tier three to tier two. It was the most growth we have ever seen there, and it was a really exciting time for us. And we saw positive growth in math with all of our R T I service students, even in grades one, two, and three, where that service is with literacy. So we are seeing that correlation, and we're seeing that we're seeing a lot of great growth with our students that way. And then here's just a visual representation of that as well. So looking forward, Greg and I are looking already at twenty twenty-one and how we can continue to build on this progress, even though it was kind of cut off. And like he said, you know, we are upset that we don't get to see the how this is represented in those state assessment scores. But we are confident that we made a lot of substantial growth and that we can do it again. For E L A, we're just excited to, for the first time in a really long time, being fully aligned in a curricular lens in K to eight. Like I said before, we're getting those new materials that are going to be more equitable. They're going to be more engaging for students. We have that formative assessment built in for progress monitoring and to help with responsive teaching within the classroom. And to continue with the sustained professional development, we started that the last week of school. And we have scheduled professional development in August for teachers to help get the school year off to make sure we're meeting all of our students who are going to come in with lots of different learning gaps in September, where they are, so that we can help move them forward and progress. And we're going to continue with our systematic R T I criteria, the collection and analysis that we've been doing because it was really successful this year.
Yeah, and the math end, as Lily said, we're really hoping to hit the ground running as well. We're expanding our our math workshop P D in the grades K to two and seven and eight. And as Lily mentioned, we're just, we're hoping to enhance and keep strengthening our our R T I program. And overall, I just feel like we're at a better place for targeted instruction and data-driven monitoring on a daily basis with our teachers and students. So for that, we do want to thank central administration and the board for kind of empowering us to purchase the resources that we do need. Because I feel like right now, we have a good vision and we're getting the support we need to move with that vision. And the data is showing that it is working. So we're excited to see where it goes next.
That's it. So thank you so much for your attention.
Well, Lily and Greg, thank you so much. This is hashtag E H T pride. I am elated to see the results. I thank you for the work and the effort that you put in to facilitate all this this year. But I also thank the teachers for their teaching, for their assessing, the progress monitoring, and for believing in the philosophy of, you know, every child every day and looking at the importance of servicing all students, meeting them where they are, and providing them resources that they need to be successful. And that's our mission, right? The embrace, the engage, and the educate. So again, I want to thank you. I want to thank everyone that that was involved in this. I just felt it was important. Here we are, June thirtieth, concluding a school year and to report on how we did academically, which is which is very important. It is one of our student learning goals, student achievement. And I'm excited to sit here and see that you have plans in place for professional development over the summer and into the next school year. Your orders and your resources that are needed in our budget align to your needs and align to the data that you receive. So excellent work. I thank you very much. You know, Lily, I think you said it earlier, three years to know, five years to grow. I kind of, I like that saying that you shared with me before. We are heading in the right direction, right? I mean, I saw that blue and I saw that red. We're not not at a hundred yet, but we're getting there. We are getting there, and I want to be moving in in that direction. That makes me smile. So thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your efforts. And with that, Mr. Castellano, that is the superintendent's report.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that report. And thank you to Lily and Greg for a great job, very informative and good work. So thank you. Keep up the great work. And to, again, the entire faculty and staff for their great work this year. We're going to now, I understand, our student reps are with us. We have Ethan and Gabby. Do you prefer to be called Gabby? Gabriella, tell me which you prefer.
I like Gabby.
Okay, that's what it shall be. So you guys are welcome to join us all through the summer if you'd like. Completely up to you. For tonight, if you have anything you'd like to report, you certainly may, if you want to introduce yourselves or questions that you may have for us. Whatever you'd like to do, we're very glad to have you with us and welcome. So whatever you'd like to do is fine.
I'll let my 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 co-board rep go first.
Are you sure?
Sure, go for it, Gabby. Ladies first.
I just wanted to say that I'm really grateful to be in front of all you guys today, and I'm excited for the year. And I'm sure that me and Ethan will try our hardest to do a good job and represent the student body properly. And I just wanted to say thank you.
You're welcome. We're glad you're here. And again, you're welcome to be with us through the summer. Glad to have you.
I I echo Gabby's remarks. You know, it's an honor to be here. I look forward to working with everyone on the board. I've had the privilege of speaking to a few of you in the past. And I hope to, you know, do a great job. And I also was requested by my my predecessors, Mr. Sappi and Ms. Baumgartl, to thank the board for their time, to send them their regards. They were deeply honored to be a part of the board for this past year, so they wanted me to deliver that message to you as well.
Very good. Thanks, Ethan. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're without doubt the best stress guy on this call. So I want to give you a big thumbs up on that.
Very much. I appreciate that.
And so welcome. So we are now going to move to our first public comment period, which is on agenda items only for a three-minute period of time. Again, agenda items only. And I'll turn it over to Shandra. Again, we cannot comment on personnel and we cannot comment on litigation. If there's a question that gets complicated, it may be necessary for administration to get back to you with 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 an answer. So with that, we'll go to public comment on the agenda items, please.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano. And just a reminder, please do not leave a voicemail when you call six oh nine six five three zero one hundred, extension fourteen seventeen during this public comment portion. Do not leave a message, just due to call volume, it may require several attempts. We do anticipate a thirty-second delay from the time we open this up to when it broadcasts live stream. And we thank you for your patience as we work through this virtual board meeting. Okay, Mr. Castellano, it has been a full minute and change, so I believe we can close public comment at this time.
Okay, well, thank you. And perhaps we'll have some comments later on when they're open to to all topics. So at this point, we're going to move into our finance and operations. And before
If you want to entertain, there is a phone call coming in right now. I'll check it.
Okay, sure.
Okay, Acre Township Public Comment. Name and address, please.
Hi, Chris Vascoledes, Ruby Drive, E H T.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Hi, I have a rising senior and seventh grader. Last year, I transferred my daughter into Fernwood Middle School. I'm an administrator in another district. My wife is a teacher. I had the privilege of having both of my children attend my school district. And we kept my daughter there a little longer because I wasn't thrilled with my son's elementary experience in the E H T. At the transfer, my daughter was a straight A student, perfect attendance, strong standardized test scores. She was in the gifted program for math. So last summer, I inquired about the advanced math class at Fernwood, but I had trouble getting accurate information because of all the administrative groupings. It wasn't until the third week of school that my daughter was given a battery of tests. She was denied entry by a supervisor who said her skills were lacking and she would not succeed in the class. The information that I mentioned before was conveniently ignored. I wasn't satisfied with his rationale or the decision, so my wife and I met with Mr. John Davis. Mr. Davis, let's make our case. We reviewed all the information we provided, and we had a really good conversation. And he said he would speak to a few people and make a decision. Well, he ultimately decided that she didn't meet the criteria to be in the class. Now, I'm very proud to say that my daughter finished with an A for the year, and she scored well above her grade level on the very test that was used against her by the supervisor. Even her teacher admitted after working with her that she belonged in the class. And I can't help but feel that if Mr. Davis had ruled against us, she would have wasted an entire year by not being challenged. And she would never be able to get that back. If Mr. Davis ruled against us, I wouldn't have been happy. But I would have at least felt that he genuinely took the time to hear us out. He talked about a partnership with parents and a customer service approach that Dr. Brucio promotes. And I'm happy to say that Mr. Davis demonstrated that vision in all our interactions. So as critical as I can be sometimes, especially being in the field, I felt it was appropriate and fair to come on tonight and speak on a positive experience. And I have Mr. Davis to thank you for that. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment very much. Again, this comment period is for agenda items though only. Do we have any other calls?
Not at this time. We will put the sign back up for another minute or so. Not at this time. We will put the sign back up for another minute or so. Okay, no other callers have come in.
Okay, thank you, Shandra. So, we are officially moving on. We are moving to finance and operations and I, I want to again, thank the caller for the positive comment. We do appreciate it. So, we're going to move on to uh, finance and operations. Um, I, I see a hand, yes?
I was gonna say that, I, just because we, I just didn't want to get away from um, the presentation that was just done by Mrs. Moss and uh, Mr. Ryan in reference to math in the LA. And I just wanted to say that um, one thing I am extremely excited about is the fact that um, of the alignment of the curriculum from K to eight. I think that is a huge, huge step in the right direction for um, the students in our district and for the teachers. Because I, I think for, you know, and I think this is, a lot of districts, you have different programs and you try this, you need a little bit of this and a little bit of that. But once you try to align it and I think incorporate an RTI within a course within um, into ELA, but to have it in math, I think is, is a huge um, step in right directions, like you said. Um, and thank you all for, for doing that. But I just want to um, I, I saw the scores and I went through the, the presentation and I took some notes and I, the one thing I just want to say is that, that dip with the fourth and fifth, sixth and seventh grade in there, I just um, I just want to say that we, you know, that we, I know we were making progress, but we have to continue to, to closely monitor it. And I know that our teachers are, you know, um, putting forth the effort, but we do have to make sure that we, I just want to make sure that we provide that P D that they need in order to um, to have, to have the confidence in um, understanding of when they administer the testing for children. Because my question, I guess, was like, some of the testing um, is one-to-one testing? And is some of it computer-based? And then the other piece is, um, I guess my question was more so, or putting out there, I see the growth, like fourth graders, they said it was fifteen percent, then it was the forty-three percent kids of the children went up to one level. But I was wondering, like, do we, do, do we do a baseline of where the children started? Are they, are they on grade level? Um, and they showed increase of maybe one or two levels? Or were these children two or three grade levels behind and then finally caught up in their own grade level? I think that's, um, and this is not to take away from the growth. I mean, we're excited about that, but just kind of breaking it down, like, are, is this just getting children on grade level? Or these are children that are really kind of like exceeding, going beyond that grade level? Because that's super important. And um, so that, and also, I just wanted to say that I did get a chance to look through um, I guess this is more on curriculum and finance, but I looked through uh, the books that were offered in a different grade levels, like far as with the high school. And you talked about having literature where children could see themselves um, in the literature that they're reading, regardless of their ethnicity or their background. And I just wanted um, commend you and thank you for that. Uh, because it's important for you to be able to see yourself, whether you see, you know, children that may have disabilities, see the, to see a book that has children in there that may be in a wheelchair or maybe have crutches. Um, just to have that and for that to be on the table um, is very important. It's important to me and I would think that would be important to our community as well. So, um, I was just looking through some of the books and different things and I see different um, books that address uh, diversity. I'm at the high school level in grades eleven to twelve, um, such as like Jane Pittman, um, Black Like Me, um, Women, Race and Class. Those are some of the books at the eleventh and twelfth grade level. And I just wanted, um, just to make sure that we have those type of books um, for children that read that even from K to twelve. That in the library is just diversity in the literature and not even, not just that, but also in the different authors that we um, provide for the children. So, I just wanted to say that and I just like said my, I guess my other question is just, where do the kids start? Is this a grade, are they on grade level? How many are not? And then also, even when you talk about ALL, all students, is this the um, what's, what's students, because all across the grade levels are broken down by gender, race, and this ethnicity? What, how are all students performing? And that's not something that you, that you have to answer right this second, but those are the questions that kind of came to me as I looked through the presentation.
So, I can, I, um, we do have more, tonight's, we were really just focusing on growth.
Okay.
Um, but I do, I can definitely provide that information for you. Um, we do have it broken down of like, who was meeting in the beginning and what was those presented percentages and meeting now? Um, we really, you know, for us, for the purpose of tonight, we wanted to focus on that positive growth. Again, we were just seeing so much of it through the RTI process. And like, we were really excited for cycle three because we had seen so much growth with cycle two. And like, as I, you know, I had data meetings scheduled that whole week and, you know, we don't come to school and it was just kind of like, oh, we did so much work and we saw kids growing so much. Um, but just to address two things that you, so we, I will work on getting you guys a more detailed report as where they started and then the growth from there. Because this does include all students. The only students not included in here are M D population, but this is all I C R, it is L R C, it's all of those classrooms. Um, so, the M D is not fully aligned because of just the different needs within those classrooms, but I did train the M D teachers um, in the middle school last year and I'm working on training them this year throughout the elementary schools as well for students, because we do have students that are readers and, and once they are, you know, once we, we want to meet all of our population of students where they are to help continue to grow to everyone's highest potential, like we said with the, all the students. Um, about two years ago, we revised our high school curriculum to do just what you said. We knew that we were, we were doing a lot of classics and canons and unfortunately, a lot of that is very, um, you know, you have your male protagonist and, and that's it. So, we did want to expand that. We expanded our essential questions. Um, we take it from freshman year to senior year in a thematic base of looking at ourselves as individuals and part of a community, part of our country in junior year to being a global citizen senior year. So, we are growing that with the hopes of continuing to look at titles and different authors and really offering students more choice as well within their reading. And then, as I mentioned before, in K to eight, part of the big push for this um, purchasing of all these materials and finally being aligned was the equity piece. Because those, they carefully choose authors and books where's like, where's, where there is more representation. Um, because when I went to my training last summer, um, one of the things that they talked about, and I'm gonna actually just share this graphic with you really quickly, because I feel like I talk about it a lot, um, is just the lack of representation in children's literature. And where, you know, fifty percent is, is a white main character and the next highest represented group is animals. So, that's a major issue, um, and something that needs to be taken into consideration and rectified. So, the choices of books for book clubs and read alouds and guided reading and shared reading are really carefully selected. The author studies are carefully selected so that we are getting, um, you know, a more diverse collection of books in hands of our students from K to eight as well. Did I address all of your questions? I think you're muted, Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Oh, okay, yes. I was gonna say, oh, I think, I think this was a great start to a conversation and um, I really appreciate it. And my last question is, so, and so, in tenth grade, they have a book called Freak the Mighty. The um, Max, Max the Mighty, is that different than Freak the Mighty that they read in sixth grade? That was my quick concern, because I was like, I, I know the sixth grader, my daughter did Freak the Mighty and I was like, wait a minute, is it a tenth grade book? Or is it just a different version?
Well, those are not the same books. Is that on the supplemental list?
Uh, it was, it was on the tenth grade list. Um, I don't know if it was summer reading, but it was like a, it was in the textbook version, it was on tonight's agenda. And I just was like, I knew Freak the Mighty because we were, that's what we did over remote learning, was Freak the Mighty in uh,
Yeah, no, that's definitely a middle school. Um, yeah, I, I, I would have to look into that, because I'm not familiar with Freak the Mighty.
Yes, Freak the Mighty, but then it had parentheses, Max the Mighty. So, and the kid, one of the characters, I think his name was Maxwell or something like that, I think. So, I was just wondering, I was just saying to myself, if it was a, I know the sixth graders read it this.
Oh, it's a sequel to Freak the Mighty.
Okay.
For um,
It's okay, I just figured it might be a different version. Um, like a different, like the sixth grade, it was a sixth grade level book and the, I'm thinking that this might be the, the tenth grade version or something. I almost said, I know they're pushing the kids, but I was like, whoa. Just wanted to. Okay. But thank you. And, and last time, I just want to say I was smiling very much when I saw the student reps um, with us. And I just want to say to them, you really made my heart smile because you're the reason why we're here. You're our focus and you're really our focus and I'm just super proud of you guys and uh, Mr. Saul and Ms. Malina. Uh, you're gonna do a great job and, and that's, we're here for children and, and making sure that you have all the tools you need to be successful. So, that's all.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Are we uh, are we good to move into finance and operations?
Sounds like it to me.
Okay, so what I'm going to s- ask is if uh, there are any uh, comments from the, the chair before we go ahead and, and take a motion?
I don't have any comments, but I will pass it over to Shandra Anaya if anything has changed.
I have just a few updates. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. So, uh, the board members received the agenda the Friday before the board meeting and get a chance to review it and ask any questions to make sure that they have the information to be able to vote. Um, this particular agenda, there was a question regarding the outstanding checks. There are some high balance checks on there. Um, we did inform the board members. We do have a process in the business office where we do verify or attempt, you know, contact a vendor a couple times to say, may I cash this check? What's going on? Um, we even reissued one of the checks last year. Now been um, a year and a half since um, that one made, one big check hasn't been cleared. So, um, the board has the right to then cancel the check. Um, and that's the resolution that's on this agenda. Um, it will be moving towards quarters because we did order new checks this past spring um, with our new stock to read, avoid after ninety days. So, we were kind of handcuffed in the past and we gave it a year's time, but now we're gonna be able to do it every now, every three months. Additionally, the sixty-four twenty-one policy, um, the draft form had majestic oil for our district's diesel and gas purchases for the year. Um, Atlantic County went out to a county bid and although majestic oil has been the successful um, vendor for years, uh, Riggins came in and um, actually won the bid, decided to change that sixty-four twenty-one to read Riggins. Um, overall, that's my update. If there's any questions, we can definitely answer.
Okay, anything for Shandra before we go ahead and, and look for the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion for eight point one through eight point four one, please.
So made. Marita?
Second, Barbara.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on finance and operations? I'm just gonna mention one item briefly, and that's eight point three nine, our, our contract with ACIT. Uh, Mrs. Burden and I attended the delegate assembly this past weekend and there was a discussion on the um, governance of sending and receiving districts. And while not exactly the same issue, it certainly brought to mind um, the issues that we're seeing with uh, ACIT, the fact that um, they are not bound by the two percent cap that other districts uh, like us are, are bound by. Uh, the fact that tuition, once set, can go up after the fact for two years. So, two years from tonight, ACIT can come back and ask for additional payment for those students. So, think about if you bought a car and two years later, the car salesman called you up and said, you know what? The price of that car went up. So, I don't want to dwell, except to say that we really need to take a look at what's going on there. So, is that, is, is there any other discussion? But, and I will be supporting our motion because we don't want to disrupt any educational process. I, I mentioned that because I think that's something we need to take a look at.
Uh, Mr. Castellano?
Go ahead, Mr. Del Barca, did you have a?
I, I was just saying, we did some work on that. I know Dr. Brucio was really involved with this, with the county and this whole plan on what, what they were doing. I think it was Greater Egg had a movement going on there for a while back in the uh, I guess it was in the fall. So, I think we have to continue, Pete. I think you're exactly right. It's a hot topic, I think, still around the county and we have to keep making our moves and discussing it.
Um, Mr. Castellano, I was gonna say that, so when I looked at that information, it said that it was, it basically was uh, and this was a rough number, and I don't know if I was reading it correctly, but one thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars a month per student? And then it, at the end of the contract, it showed a total of two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred, seven dollars for, as a total for the year. Is that, is that correctness, Anaya? Or is that just kind of like, with that increase, they, they can come back and ask for the tuition again? Or how, how does that work with?
So, the agreement um, is for general education students to be sixty-one hundred per year and special ed students to be seventy-five hundred per year. Um, the whole twenty twenty-one school year will happen. They will hire as needed, they will accept more students and then they can get more staff. It's kind of a quality check thing. And then they close out their books at the end of twenty-one and by twenty-one, twenty-two, they come back and say, it actually costs us a lot more to educate those kids. You have to pay us more money. What most schools have to do is plan accordingly that, that is the tuition, the anticipated enrollment number is what the anticipated enrollment number is. You don't take more students in and then hire more staff. They can do that with the flexibility that, that they have without a cap. So, I could actually ask for more money later.
That would exceed that two hundred and nine thousand. Okay.
Any, any other discussion on finance and operations, please? Okay, hearing none, roll call.
So, Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Are we, what are we, eight point what to what, right now?
Eight point eight point four one.
Okay, um, I'm a no on eight point one one, yes on everything else.
Eight point one one, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's Mr. Castellano.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're uh, going to move now to curriculum. And I'm gonna ask Mrs. Summer if she has anything she'd like to update us on.
Um, I have no updates at this time, but I will pass it on to Mr. Santilli to see if he would like to add anything.
Thank you, Ms. Summer. Now, there's been no updates. Um, what is on the agendas had not changed or been revised. So, that uh, what we discussed last week uh, in our committee reports would be. what we discussed last week, uh, in our committee reports, would be exactly what, uh, we'd be voting on.
Okay, thank you, very good, so I'm gonna ask for a motion on nine point one, please.
This is Lou, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion on curriculum? Seeing none, could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi? You're muted. You're still muted? Mrs. Solagi? Okay. Mrs. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
I'll come back to Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving to personnel, I'm gonna ask, uh, Dr. Charlton if he has anything to update us on, for public session?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, just our main discussion tonight was the onboarding of new employees that will be working with our children in the district, and obviously, we only have a, a couple of board meetings until the start of school, which is sixty-four short days away. So in the next couple of agendas, you're going to see slates of appointments, so we can get those people moving, get them on boarded, and get them ready for the beginning of school. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm gonna ask for a motion now for, for ten point one through ten point seven, please.
Motion.
Price, motion.
Mr. Price, and Mrs. Gilbert Floyd? Got it.
Is there any discussion on personnel? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Oh, yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
No to ten point one, and ten point six, yes to everything else.
Thank you, and Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Policy.
Okay, we're gonna move into policy, and I'm going to ask our chair, if she has, uh, anything to update us on.
I don't have any updates thus far, I don't know if Mr. Santilli has any updates, and, uh, we just have a lot of information on policy tonight.
So nothing, uh, again, nothing has changed in regards to the policies, um, however, eleven point one and eleven point two, to draw your attention back to them, they are um, requiring two readings, um, so this is the first of two readings for those two policies, everything else on there, uh, for action tonight is just requiring one reading.
Very good, thank you, so I'm gonna ask then for a motion on, on eleven point one through eleven point six.
If Mr. Del Barca, I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Second from Mrs. Summer. Any discussion on policy? Seeing none, may we have roll call?
Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi? You had it.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Thank you, moving on, uh, new business, we have item twelve point five, and this is uh, a resolution in support of the one-seventy-seventh Air National Guard wing acquiring the F thirty-five aircraft, I think this is, uh, would be a wonderful thing for our area, for the one-seventy-seventh, uh, for the area, for the country, uh, uh, an obvious plus for everyone involved. Little trivia time, so this is my twenty-fifth year working out at the tech center, and, uh, of course, we're co-located with the Air Guard. The, uh, the base opened in nineteen forty-three as Naval Air Station Atlantic City, and at that time, it had a dual mission. Uh, it was training pilots to take off and land, uh, simulating an aircraft carrier, and it was, uh, used for homeland security. And, you know, and we've come full circle, exactly what it was used for then, it's used for now, and we need to have state-of-the-art aircraft, so. With that, I'll look for, uh, thank you for indulging me with my mi- moment of trivia, and I'll ask for a motion on item twelve point one, please.
I'll make that.
I'll thank you.
Mr. Price and Mrs.
Okay, any discussion on twelve point one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Del Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Summer?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Bird?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. We have, uh, uh, an updated board calendar, uh, is there anything we'd like to highlight, highlight from the Department of Education letter and certificate? Uh, Dr. Gruccio?
Yes, of course, accolades, um, make us smile, um, this is a letter from New Jersey Department of Education, the World Language Model Program Initiative, and, um, Agrover Township School District has once again been designated as a model program for the twenty to twenty-two award period. Um, I had the privilege of going up with Dr. Schreiner a couple of years ago to receive this award, um, it's a beautiful plaque, but it's even a better honor, uh, to stand there, uh, with the Department of Education and other school districts that receive these, these honors, but, um, we certainly do have a model program, um, in Agrover Township, and it's always nice to be recognized for the work that we do, and as you see there, there is a certificate, um, for the Outstanding Model Program for, for World Languages that was awarded, and I'm sure the plaque will come, but, um, plaque or no plaque, proud to be E H T, so thank you.
Very good, and congratulations to Dr. Schreiner. Uh, always excellent work, uh, thanks to all involved with that. And, uh, we will go now to our second public comment period, uh, on any topic, again, for three minutes. Um, we do not discuss personnel or litigation, and if a topic is complicated, it may be necessary for an administrator to get back to you with a response. So with that, we'll open it up for public comment on any topic for three minutes, please.
Just to make sure, we're gonna leave it for another thirty seconds. All right.
Okay. Well, I certainly do hope we had, um, at least members of the public, um, watching and listening and following along. And, uh, so at this point, then, I'm going to ask for, uh, any comments at all, uh, from board members?
I have a comment, please, Marita. Uh, I would like to thank I would like to thank Dr. Gruccio and all of the staff, um, I don't think a meeting goes by that someone is not recognized by the state or by the county, and I just so appreciate, uh, everyone in our school district, all the teachers, all, all the staff, but, um, Kim, you continuously bring us good news, even in bad times, and I just really, really appreciate that, and I'm really proud to be on E H T's school board.
Thank you, thank you very much, and, um, I, I, I echo, um, your sentiments regarding our staff and our, and our, uh, administrators, um, in our school buildings, they, they really do work with passion and pride, and, um, they strive for excellence, so I, I couldn't ask for anything more, um, and, um, I have to just lean it on, lean to them for, um, all the hard work, and I thank them, but thank you very much.
Pete. Oh, I'll wait.
Yes.
I heard, Ms.
Pete, can I get, can I say something?
Sure, go ahead, Barb, you got it.
Okay, all right, it's a little confusing. Uh, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mrs. Moss and Mr. Ryan for coming and explaining the current data that's come out, and, um, it really, it, it, it looked like some good improvement had been done, and I was really impressed with the fact that they have a plan for twenty-twenty-one, and building off of where the students are, so, um, thank you for having them come, Dr. Gruccio.
You're welcome. Again, um, I was just excited about the progress, and I wanted you all to, to see how well we're doing, but usually, at this time of the year, we, we, we report our progress, um, you know, red or green, um, because I always say, feedback makes us better at what we do, so, um, it's important, um, to use the data, and, uh, you know, capitalize on all the work and effort that the teachers do, uh, the parents do, supporting their students, and the administration gathering the gather, the data and the tools that we use, so thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Price, then, Mrs. Bird's been waiting patiently, Mike, yes?
Do I have it, Pete?
Yes.
Okay, there's a little delay here tonight, the system's lagging, but I appreciate, Peyton. Um, I just had a question, uh, for Mr. Santilli, uh, last meeting, there was a discussion about, um, preschool for three-year-olds, I just wanted to know if there was any, um, any movement on that, or if he has any updates? And the other thing, I would just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July coming up, and, uh, looking forward, um, to having a great graduation day, maybe somebody wanted to comment on that as well, so I'll listen out, thank you.
Thanks, Mike, thanks very much, and I know Mrs. Bird's been waiting patiently.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano, um, I, mine is really more of a discussion piece for the board, in April, we resolved to, um, suspend our policies under emergency circumstances, which gave Dr. Gruccio broader, you know, capabilities through the unknown, um, during the quarantine, but as we are starting to approach some levels, we're going back to some levels of norm- normalcy, or we're attempting to plan for our levels of norm- normalcy, I am posing to the board, at what point are we going to, um, you know, reverse that resolution and, and get back to following the policies that the board has put forth?
And, uh, I, I think that's an excellent point, and, and excellent question, and, you know, I'll, and to, to, you know, I'll just say that, I think that over this summer, I think that ought to be part of our back-to-school discussion, and I'll go, go ahead, I'm Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay. I don't believe that we're anywhere near close now, I know that, uh, Dr. Gruccio is, I believe, on a committee with state representatives to see what it's gonna look like, so she was, our district was chosen to have a lot of input into the back-to-school. So I think, um, as it goes right now, that there, I mean, we can keep it in the back of our mind, but until we get back to school, and all the students are there full-time, there's, there's gonna be a lot of work that needs to be done.
I, I think I need a little bit of clarity on is, Ms. Floyd, I think I need a little bit of clarity on, and I'm really just, it is gonna be a lot of work that needs to be done. So, so right now, the question on the table is to what, go back to overseeing, taking away the, um, overarching control over the policies, I think I need to.
Well, let me clarify a little bit more, I think we gave this, oh, we put this resolution in when things were changing day to day, and things are still changing day to day. And I think Dr. Gruccio still needs that power to make some decisions, instead of holding things and waiting until the next meeting and bringing them to us. So, at, while things are still so fluid, I think we should keep with the resolution.
So I guess I want to ask that, I guess that'd be a question, I don't know if it's a question for the, I think it's a question for the board. Number one, I do think it's, it's definitely a discussion question for the whole board, and then number, uh, number three is, Dr. Gruccio, what do you feel like you would have limitations, if it was, if it was, you know, if we did it our normal way, do you feel like you've had limitations prior to, or? What are your thoughts? I guess that would be more so my question to get some information from her first.
Well, I, I don't think I really changed any policies, um, except maybe in terms of online learning, and, um, regarding, um, our curriculum, um. I know this was, um, in conjunction with a recommendation by your attorney, um, so I'm gonna turn to her, um, I know, Amy, you talked about, there may be some times where there would be situations that come up, I don't know if anything, um, drastic, I don't know if I'm using the right word, word, um, has, has come up, however, I don't know what the next two months are gonna be as, as well, um, because I, we do have to restructure, um, the way we're going to have school. So I, I would have to go through and look through all our poli- policies to see, I mean, we're, we're talking, um, possibly scheduled, um, busing, transportation, so there'll be all those areas, food services, um, and they may touch upon some policies that we have, so. Um, I think that's why that overarching resolution allowed for administration, um, to have um, flexibility, leniency, if you will, um, when, when you look at the regs, um, that were shared through this, if I can just, I'm not real savvy with this computer right here, um. The regs that were shared by, or the guidelines that were shared that I introduced earlier, there were four areas, and this just hit me, there are four areas, and it, number three was provide policy guidelines and fundings to school. I don't know what that entails, maybe Amy can bring in on that? Does that have to do with Mrs. Byrd speaking about, or is that something else? Do we have to develop new policies? I mean, will there be the chance that some of our policies will have to be altered, because school will never be the same as it was? And as the chairperson for the policy committee, I just wanted to put it out there that I don't foresee there being, if, let's say if we went back to our regular process, I don't foresee roadblocks being placed up to try to prevent administration from doing what they need to do, but I also know that there's a reentry committee that's been put in place with all stakeholders in it, and I think that'll also serve as a checks and balance kind of thing, which, which is the purpose of why, you know, we do all, the check and balance system to make sure things are where they need to be for student safety and things of that nature for reentry. I think that's, I think those kinds, those things are kind of in place, but I'm gonna let Ms. Elko speak to, where she can share with us to enlighten the whole board.
Thank you very much to everybody. So I think, and when we look at what we did, at April 28th, we went ahead and we approved a motion to suspend the policies under the emergency circumstances, that we were in a state of emergency, school was closed during COVID-19. And because of that, we are, and we're still going to be violating and/or not following certain policies. And that's just by the nature of we are not in the school building, we are not doing things the way we normally do them. So one of the things we discussed is, if anyone has one of the old-fashioned policy books around, they are inches and inches and inches thick. And you might not even realize, you might not be following one of the policies because we are in a virtual environment, just by the very nature of the fact that the policy says in the school building, as opposed to in a virtual classroom. So what the bylaw does is, and what the resolution you passed does, is it only authorizes this while we're in this state of emergency. So twofold, one, you can obviously change your resolution at any time, but there is a limit to it. It's not forever. It's just while we're in this state of emergency. The second thing I want to point out is, as Dr. Gruccio said, part of the road back to schools will be to have some policies implemented by the district, whether it's virtual learning, whatever, we have to look at to say what makes sense for preparedness, for everybody to come back into the building, what those plans look like, and we might have some new procedures as well. So we very well could be asking the policy committee to look at new policies over the summer so we can bring some things forward. So I do think we have two separate things going on. I would suggest you continue on with this resolution, at least while we're doing our steering committee to determine the road back to, coming back physically to EHT, but obviously that is the board's decision.
I think we're gonna see some policies on, just like the social distancing and the mask requirements wherever we get there. We're probably gonna have to end up putting that in writing somewhere. The reg, so that's something that, you know.
Pete, may I get in on this a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead.
As you all know, I'm representing the county as president for the next year or so. And every other week, there are meetings being held for the county leaders group, and it's on the website, and we, you can go, actually, you can go to Ray Penning address at school boards and find what we did yesterday afternoon. And I sent a summary of yesterday's presentation. There were at least 30 people there from around the state to Dr. Gruccio, to Pete, to Amy, so that they would have an idea of the many ideas that were there. And most of the topics discussed were about reopening and this road back plan. All of you should be, should know that you can go on the Department of Ed site and see the road back. It's right there. It's 104 pages long. It has all this information about stuff. It's really, I've been trying to read through it. Contradictory at times, very confusing at times. I know that Dr. Gruccio is laughing because she's in the same roadblocks as a road back. But I know from what Kim has been telling us, the district-wide committee's coming up in the next week or so, and then there'll be some subcommittees. And I think, as we were saying about policy, that's gonna be a major discussion under those subcommittees and with the recommendation to the main committee and then to Dr. Gruccio and to the board as to how we open. So there's a lot there for us to look at. You can go back, you can go on the school board's site and hear what was discussed yesterday. You can go on the department's site and see the whole road back and get yourself informed, because there's so much involved. One of the biggest complaints from all the leaders around the state yesterday, and we can't do anything about it, is why didn't we hear about this a month ago? I mean, we're down to two months, and I think there's a date early August sometime when we have to have our plan to the department before we can even open schools. So the pressure is on, and I know these committees are gonna be busy. And I sent to Dr. Gruccio today, I didn't know about this, and she heard about it, I think, earlier. The Glaspero superintendent developed the whole plan with all of this stuff outlined, and it's really quite good. And I shared it with Kim in case she wants to use it. She may have seen it before, I'm not sure. But some people are doing that around the state, and some of the people were reporting that they've already had the committee's meeting, and we're ahead of the game a little bit. So we have a lot of work to do. I think the most important thing is we have challenges, and the challenges are, we all have to collaborate, folks. It's a big time for us right now. We all have to listen, because there's so much going on, and it's a big point that I'm concerned that there's people, the public's gonna be confused, the kids are gonna be confused, the teachers are gonna be upset, and we all have to get on that same collaborative mood, and we have to be flexible. There's gonna be so much need for flexibility in this, and guess what? As we've done the last three months, we have to adjust quickly. There's gonna be adjustments that are gonna be made that we're gonna be shocked with. There are things in there that the state's allowing flexibility regarding how we have school. I told Dr. Gruccio, one of the transportation people in the state, it has to be a small district, the coordinator's already put plastic shields between, on the buses, between the kids, between each kid on the bus. So each kid was involved with a plastic shield, and after each run, they're gonna clean those plastic shields. Now, can you imagine us doing that here in Agarber Township with the number of buses we have? I mean, there's the kind of thinking that's going on. So I just want to get that in. I think it's going to be on, I think we should remain as we are right now with the policy situation, because there's gonna be so much coming up, we're gonna be overwhelmed, and we only have, who said 64 days till we open? That kind of timeline to be running it, and let's all get together, folks, because we're gonna be busy. Thank you.
Mr. Castellano, I just have a follow-up, if that's okay?
Sure, yes, and thank you, Lou, for that. Appreciate that very much.
I have to mention, before I totally forget, I'm sorry, board members. August 10th, a Monday evening, there's gonna be another county-wide meeting of all the, of all the boards in the county. And again, it's gonna be a joint one this time. I think it's gonna be with Cape May County. I'll get you all the information when I know more, but please tune in on, it's a Monday night, so it shouldn't conflict with any of our meetings. So thank you, Kristy, for letting me get that in there. Take care.
No problem, Lou.
Well, and happy Fourth of July, everybody.
Thank you. I totally agree, Lou, that the collaborative piece and the patience and the working out of all the details is something that we are all going to have to adjust to, and, you know, it's insane. And I brought up this resolution not because I felt like, I feel that it is very necessary. That's why we voted for it. However, I think that we have to start considering an endpoint to it, because we are elected officials. We've been elected to represent our community, to represent the students, to represent the taxpayers. And by not having that collaborative piece as board members, it's kind of removing what we were voting in to do, in my opinion. So while it is necessary, and while day-to-day things are changing, and obviously Dr. Gruccio has to make decisions quickly on some of this, I do think that having the checks and balances system, the nature of a board of education lends itself to making sure that it, you know, not just one person is making the decisions. So I would like us to really consider thinking about an end date so that we are representing the people who voted us in to do this job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd. Any other board members? Any comments on any, anything? Hearing and seeing none, administration, any final thoughts?
No, that's all. Happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So I'm gonna add, you know, happy Fourth of July to everyone. Thank you all for tuning in. Those of you who are with us remotely, you know, and again, just ending, you know, where we started. Opening school is going to be a lot of work. Next year is gonna be like nothing we've ever seen. And I'm asking that all of us work together to make it happen. So happy Fourth of July, and I'll call for, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay, show of hands, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone, and thank you.
Good night.
Bye-bye.